This time, we are back to our video conference for our board meeting on April 27th. 7:08. All trustees are present. At this time, the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District and Central Administration, we will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on our students, our district, our dedicated teachers and staff, our supportive community, and of course, our parents. Thank you, guys. At this time, we'll move to our pledges and trustee Jesse Rodriguez is going to lead us in our pledges tonight. Jesse?
Yes, if everyone would please stand and we'll be deciding both pledges. First one's the US. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
The United States
America
Of America
To the Republic
And to the
Rip it quick. Stands
One nation
One nation, under God Indivisible With liberty And justice For all.
And now the Texas flag. Honor the
The Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance
Texas One state, under God
Under God
One indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Now, at this time, we'll move to the open forum and I
We do
Sign your name. Yeah?
We do have a speaker for, we do have a speaker for the open forum. Next on the agenda is the open forum section of our video conference board meeting. Any person who is not scheduled on the agenda may address the board via video conference during the open forum section of the board meeting. The request to speak Google form must be submitted by 6:45 PM prior to the start of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board is restricted from discussing or taking action on items presented during open forum if the item is not listed on tonight's agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered. In addition, this is not the forum that the district has provided to raise and resolve complaints about individual employees or students. Requested person to speak in an open forum on items not on the agenda refrain from raising complaints against such individuals or personally identifying them in any way in their remarks unless it is pursuant to the district's grievance policies. Please contact the appropriate administrator to address your comments or concerns. There is generally a three-minute limit on individual presentations. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask, but is not required, that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for the group. The board president may extend it, may extend additional time at her discretion, or shorten the allowed time for each speaker to not less than three, not less than two minutes if the speaking requests are so numerous as to hinder the orderly conduct of the board, board's meeting on pending business. At this time, we have received a completed request to speak forum on the, for open forum. The district will add, add you to the teleconference and each individual will be announced in the order received. The first speaker with, our only speaker signed up tonight is Mr. Gus Kels. I'm sorry, you may have to correct my pronunciation on that one. So, Mr. Kels, just go ahead and
Okay.
Kyle will, will comfort you in and then say your full name and address and your remarks, please.
Okay. Hello, can you see me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Board of Trustee Members. I just, I've had some correspondence over the course of the whole virus situation, and I know this is going to be a very big topic going forward. And so first, I just wanted to thank you guys for your work. It's, you know, it's been a challenging experience for everybody, I know, but we really appreciate. We've got a lot of great feedback from teachers and we appreciate the efforts that have been made. One issue I just wanted to kind of put out there is the question of the expansion of I University Prep or other online learning as we look forward to the fall, especially for those families. I, both my student and my wife are both, have asthma and, and so we're just kind of want to put that out there as far as wondering what the process is going to be for looking at that and giving, gathering input and feedback as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. And is that the end of your comment?
Yes.
Okay, the, I will, an administrator will contact you regarding, regarding that process, but a lot of it that is, is online and that they'll, they'll be able to share that, share, help, help you get that information so you can proceed with that.
Before you do leave, sir, would you, for our record and since this is being recorded, could you give your name again, please, along with your address?
Oh, sure. It's Gus Kels and it's 813 Water Oak Drive in Grapevine.
Thank you so much, sir.
Mr. Kels, this is, this is Robin Ryan and I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Kels, thank you, and that is our only speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Doug. We'll move on to report to the superintendent and we'll move to item A, demographic update. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is the first item tonight. Usually, our items for information are a little bit later, but because this was a significant update and to be able to allow folks to get along with their, with their evening, Brent is here to talk to us about current demographic trends. Now, most of this, and I'm sure he'll talk about any of the impact of the last month, but this was previous to, to anything from the last month. So, Diane, anything else as far as an item for introduction? All right, so Brent, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Good, okay, go ahead, Brent.
All right, let me, I've got the, as Dr. Ryan said, the presentation, you have the full presentation for the 1920 demographic study update. I'm not going to cover every slide tonight, so I'm going to move quickly through some of the report just to focus on the key highlights for you. I'm going to share my screen here. If it will let me do it, let's see. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Right, well, the report has updated population numbers for the district as of 2019. The key thing here is just to know that Texas, prior to the, the current COVID-19 situation, had been on record population growth for the state as well as DFW. Here in the district, a little more than 86,000 people were estimated to live inside the district boundary in 2019 and, and almost, or a little more than 33,000 total households. So, as you can see here, the district continues to grow, you know, within total number of residents and, and households. But you see, here are the annual snapshot numbers for the district. The, the total number, or the official number for the 1920 school year was 13,116. That was actually up 0.3% compared to a year ago. You can see the annualized comparisons here, numeric change in the top percentage bottom, on the bottom right chart. The district has averaged a 0.6 annual decline over these last five years. It's mainly due to fewer students in the elementary grades and in the middle school grades. You can see the totals for each attendance level on this chart. They're in two-year, two-year increments, starting in 2009. The grade level numbers are shown on slide seven. I've highlighted the, for each grade, the highest or the largest class within the last 15 years, so you can kind of see some of the trends. One of the bigger waves recently began in the early, in 2008, '09, and that is what has aged up into the, the high school grades today that are close to about 1,100 per grade. But we've seen a decline these last few years behind that wave that happened about 10 years ago. But the good news is that we've seen strong kindergarten enrollment in 1920. The birth rate data shows that this should continue for the next two years. So, if you look, compare the, the 12th grade enrollment versus incoming kindergarten, it's averaged about 158 more students leaving than are coming in, which is resulted in the, in the net decline, but the gap has been closing. So, this last year with that kindergarten class being over 900, it's only about 110 that it, the difference. I'll move ahead to the transfer report. This, this, remember, shows the number of students that live in the district but are attending another public school district or charter school. You can see the transfer in numbers have increased dramatically because this does include the I University Prep students, which as of the 1920 school year was, the official enroll was 952 students. But the, the transfer outnumber, which is growing in a lot of districts due to the impact of charter schools, continues to remain pretty consistent. Grapevine-Colleyville, 292 is the official number for 1920. These are where, this list on this slide will show you where they're going. You know, most have transferred out to Birdville or Carroll or HEV schools. At the charter schools, you know, it's relatively small numbers compared to what we see in other districts in DFW. Westlake Academy still has about 27 to 30 students from, from the district. The geocoding, once again, showed about 95% of all enrolled students, non-IUP or tuition-based pre-K students live within the district boundary. That's consistent with what we've seen since 2016. When you look closer at comparing the geographic areas across the district, you see a lot of mixed results. We've seen the single-family areas stay level in some areas, decline in, in others. The apartment developments have, since 2016, for our sample, has declined about 4%. But this past year, we did see a 1.2% increase. So, we've seen some shifting around amongst the students in those multifamily developments. More on the housing market here coming up, but the main driver for growth here, obviously, have been the job numbers for DFW. They've been outstanding. You know, prior to the, the COVID-19 situation, we were, we saw incredible fall into this, into February and into March. The unemployment numbers have been around 3%. They climbed to about 4.7% as of the March numbers, so we're waiting to see what those numbers will look like in April, but we're expecting them to be over, well over 10%. Mortgage rates still fantastic. They're driving the housing market. The housing market, remember, has been deemed an essential business during these last few weeks, so it has, the builders, for the most part, have continued on. Through, these numbers show you how many existing homes were sold in 2019. Again, 950 existing sales, very consistent with what we've seen over the last few years. Note, though, that the value of an existing house continues to climb. Median sole price for the district up another 3.5% in 2019, so up to 415 when the DFW average, compare that to 270,000, so very high numbers on existing homes. New home wise, there were, another 76 were started in the district in 2019. Closings, 94 total, that's down about 39%. Most of the activity continues to be in the city of Colleyville, and that's directly related to Creekside at Colleyville being the main driver of new home production in the district. You can see they did 75 of the 94 houses in the district. So, with that subdivision being the, the most active, wouldn't surprise you, OC Taylor, Colleyville Middle, and then Colleyville Heritage High School Zones produced the most new homes. When you look at those homes in that neighborhood, most are over 500,000, but all within that price band in the 500 to 750. The district's median new home price for 2019 was 609,057, similar to what it was in 2018, just, just a slight decline, but well above where DFW is as a whole. The median price today is about 347. But looking at lot inventory, there's, at the end of the year, there were 157 vacant lots left on the ground, 69 lots were under development. Those are for the townhome development called Reserve at Bear Creek in the Grapevine Elementary Zone. And then there's still scattered lots that are planned across the district. Most of them are relatively small in size and we've seen the custom market, you know, when you see these developments that are eight lots, six lots, 12 lots, a lot of these end up being custom homes and the price point has pushed well over 800,000 and in some cases over a million dollars in the district. So, a lot of these, these homes are not big student generators. But what, here's a picture from last July of Creekside at Colleyville. Remember the picture or in here, in the photograph here, look at the Trinity Union Apartment Complex. I'm going to come back to that here in a second, but the Reserve at Bear Creek over, shown here, and that's in January, and it had started a development, and then the Preserve Apartments were opening back in January as well. So, the apartment development has actually been really strong in the district. Over 1,000 units were delivered in, since 2018. Those include the, the new ones up near, up near, uh, uh, sorry, up, um, the Jefferson Silver Lake, which is, which is up near, uh, can you guys hear me? I thought I lost you. Okay, another 707 future apartments are planned in the district. If you drive up near Grapevine Mills Mall, you can see the Wallace and the Baker Apartments that are under construction, so those are new. And then the city of Grapevine also approved another 275 at the Carter. So, when you look at the number of single-family homes that are projected to be occupied and the number of apartments that are coming, most of them are expected to be exhausted by the 2025, '26 school year. The impact, so you're, the impact on district enrollment, first, we need to cover the, the student yields. You can see that Creekside at Colleyville has generated about 0.57 students per home, but overall, single-family home today in the district is producing about 0.51 students, generally in line with what we've seen since 2016. The apartments today, overall, the yield is 0.24. That's all the apartments in, across the district, but the, many of the apartments today are the high-end urban living type apartments, like I showed you with Trinity Union, where the yield has been much lower. Some of the recent ones, Asher-Grapevine, are a 444, and Trinity Union have been about 0.3 and below, so it does take a lot more of those types of apartments to yield students. But Trinity Union did produce 47 students, so you did see some growth from that apartment complex. So, when you look at everything that we have in the forecast for the main, that's in the lot inventory, plus all the additional multifamily development, the potential for growth is there. That's what you see here on the moderate scenario. Essentially, it's a 0.3% growth line if we, if we do see kindergarten continue to grow a little bit and the additional residential developments are, are built. Now, with the COVID-19 situation, we've heard that a lot of the future deals have been, have had the, the pause button hit on those, so we should expect that several of those will be pushed out. I can't tell you exactly how long that pause button will be hit, but it, it definitely is going to cause a delay. So, if we see that delay and, and if several of these projects do not get built, then I think that gives more validity to you all seeing your enrollment remain flat, which is represented by the green line, where we've taken most of the impact from the housing developments out of the projection scenario. You have the, you have each school's 10-year comparison, but at this point, I'll, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'm, I'm only seeing two trustees, so if you have any questions, go ahead and unmute and ask at this point. We have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Is it possible to get a graph of the students coming into GCISD without I University Prep? Not that you can, or that now, but could we do that or maybe an update later?
Yes, if the, if the district can provide the address for, for those students that have enrolled in the 1920 school year, we can certainly map them for you.
And or if we, if we subtract those ballpark numbers for the I University Prep, it does look like we have more coming in than we have going out.
All right, that's, I want to see it in a graph, oh yeah, it looks like that.
Yes, the birth rate continues to show that you have more students coming in to the district than originated here.
Lisa, I have a question. It's Becky.
Yes, Becky?
So, I'm looking at the charter slide and it looks like what happens is everybody gets excited when a charter moves in and then boom, it drops off pretty rapidly, pretty quickly, or pretty dramatically, pretty quickly. Brent, I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe Dr. Ryan. Do we even have any others other than that one that gave us the address of a mailbox that has shown any interest in even coming in our orders?
I've not been aware, been made aware of any at this point that have been approved by TEA, you know, they do that every spring and, and we've not, I mean, we get a lot of charter school applications, but we've not had any inside the boundaries of GCISD at this point.
And I would confirm that. I have not seen any as well. Most are in the Fort Worth, city of Fort Worth area.
Okay, thank you.
We saw, this is Jesse, when we saw those students that indeed were moving to neighboring school districts, are they actually moving into the school district itself, or are they moving into a charter school within that school district? And maybe I missed that, if you discuss that.
Well, when you're looking at that list of, of students that are, they actually live in GCISD and attend in those other districts, so you'll have employees of other districts, their children in that list?
That was going to be my second question because of that. Okay, okay.
And so you'll have employees, but you'll have, if that district, neighboring district has open enrollment or, or any other reason that they're allowing them to transfer in, that'll all be included in that list.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? None? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
We'll move on to item B, Act on Recommendation for Executive Director of Instructional Leadership for Secondary Schools. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, as we know, Mr. Streeter has accepted a position in next door in Hershey-Las-Bretford School District, and so we certainly appreciate his leadership and his impact, a positive impact on our secondary schools in the time that he has been leading our schools there, and of course, was the Colleyville Heritage High School Principal prior to that, and we certainly want to wish him luck and wish him well. And as we look to replace his, his position of leadership, we also looked to people from inside, for the most part, so because they know our language, they know about LEED 2021 and then now LEED 2.0. And so, we have found somebody, again, at Colleyville Heritage to, to move into that role, and that is, of course, Dr. Lance Grope. And so, this evening, I'm, I'm very happy to recommend to the Board of Trustees to approve the recommendation of Dr. Lance Groppel for the Executive Director of Instructional Leadership for Secondary Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation, do I have a motion? Jesse?
Uh, yes, I'd recommend that we accept Dr. Ryan's motion.
Thank you, in a second. Louie? Thank you, Louie. Any questions? Seeing none, all of us in favor? All right. There we go. There we go. Motion carries 7-0. Now, I can ask, do we have any, any comments, any, anything? Anyone have anything to say? I'm very excited. I will tell you, I, I look around, I, there's, there's Dr. Groppel. You know, I can tell you, I would, congratulations, sir. We're very excited to have you as our new secondary leadership. It's, it is a true loss for Colleyville Heritage, but a true, but you are still here and it's a great, a great thing for administration. And, and I will say to Dr. Ryan and Gemma, there are many great things about our district, but I think the fact that we promote from within and we have such strong candidates within our district that we can do that, and I appreciate you both looking within our district to, to, to promote within. So, Dr. Groppel?
Hey, I've just, I'm excited about the, the new opportunity. Obviously, the past five years at Colleyville Heritage have been really special part of my life, and GCISD's played such a huge role in my life, having attended, you know, four schools in GCISD as a student and just to getting to continue, you know, my career journey and shape the, the schools to create the best learning environment for, for all the kids, not just the Panthers that I've had the chance to work with the last few years at Colleyville Heritage.
What four schools did you attend, Dr. Groppel?
I attended Timberline Elementary, Colleyville Middle, was the first group of eighth graders at Cross Timbers Middle School, so I guess I invented the house, so I'm sorry, I apologize for that. And then I attended Grapevine High School as a freshman, and then we moved after my freshman year and I graduated from Whitney High School, where my parents are probably watching right now if the carrier pigeon made it there with their dial-up internet.
Well, Lance, Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Just, just want you to know for the record, we like you more than we like Conrad, anyway.
I told people today that we just got a newer, newer model, so, you know, that, that, we all love Conrad and I'm going to miss him, and, and he's been such a great impact on, on me as a leader, both in my time with him at Colleyville Heritage and then been working with him in these last four years in this role, that he's really shaped me as a, as a person, as a man, and, and a leader, so I, I'm forever grateful to him.
Well, congratulations, and then I know that we wish the very best to Conrad and wish him much success as well to both of y'all, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And now the search to fill the shoes, so your shoes at Colleyville Heritage.
I don't know if we, if it's a search to fill the shoes, I think it's more the search to fill the cat suit, if we got to, we got to fill a cat suit.
Well, sir, we're, we're very excited for you, so
Me too.
Congratulations.
I would add to that, and I would just say, and I told the staff this morning that we have some fantastic teachers at Colley Heritage High School, and the fact that they're doing their work so well and the fact that they're doing their work so well, it allows their leaders to be promoted. And and so we do we do look forward to Dr. Groppel's leadership. And of course, it's a it's a family situation in the Groppel household. His father certainly has a legacy here and and Ashley, his his bride is in our Special Services Department. Of course, London and Landry are with us as well. And so today is Ashley's birthday, so this is a great birthday present for the real Groppel that's at the household there. But congratulations, Lance, and we look forward to working.
Me too. All right.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
That's it. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will now move on to item C, Act on a Donation at Bransford Elementary School.
Yes, Bransford PTA is donating a new 60-foot by 40-foot shade structure that's going to be installed over the existing playground or play structure there at the back of the school to lower the temperature over the play play structure, protect the kids from sun and and make it a lot cooler to the touch. And they've done a great job of raising some funds there at Bransford and have a good time doing it. And so the total value of the shade structure, including installation, is $42,000. Recommendation is for the Board Trustees to accept the donation of a shade structure to be installed over a play structure at the campus valued at $42,000 from the Bransford Elementary School PTA.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Doug, thank you. In a second. Mindy, second. Thank you. Any comments, any questions?
I do. I love these shade structures. I think they're great for the great for the kids and for the staff that's out there, too. How how long, what's the lifespan of those shade structures? Do they get torn up by the elements and very quickly, or how is it a 10-year timeframe, five years? Do you have any idea?
Paula, do you have any information about that?
I don't have a warranty. I don't have the information about the warranty. I don't know the manufacturer of this particular item. I would say that most of the shade structures that we've had donated have have lasted close to seven years. If we've had a big hailstorm, sometimes that places them more in jeopardy. I suspect this one is kind of along the qualities of what you might see at a car dealership, so a little bit hardier than just a standard fabric, but we can certainly look and find out and provide more information about that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carrie seven zero. They are an amazing fundraising group over there. I know all of our PTAs do a great job fundraising, but I don't think anyone close to Bransford. That's a lot. That's a lot. Yeah, that bar is high. They do a great job over there. We'll move on to item C, Act on Donation, I'm sorry, item D, Act on Donation at Cross Timber Middle School. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this item is also a donation from one of our PTAs and just as a commercial, our PTAs previous to this have been fantastic, but during the COVID shutdown have taken a leadership role in our community, have done just a tremendous job. Of course, this money was fundraised before any of that. This is for the Cross Timbers Middle School PTA to donate a the graphics to be installed on the windows along the entrance of the Student Activity Center there at Cross Timbers. The graphics are going to provide the artistic element to the exterior of the building. Total value of the graphics, including installation, is $12,183. Recommendations for the Board Trustees to accept the donation of window graphics to be installed on the windows and the SAC area of the campus valued at $12,183 from the Cross Timbers Middle School PTA.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second. I've got Doug as a second. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys. And Dr. Ryan, you're right, without our PTAs, I mean, they're just an amazing partnership. And again, thank you to Cross Timbers Middle School, because I know that's again, that's just a lot, a lot of time put in by the PTA and the parents and a lot of money. So it'd be exciting to see the graphics. Move on to item E. Approved Change Order Number 09, closing the construction package associated with the multipurpose activity centers at Colleyville Heritage High School and Grapevine High School.
Yes, this is the this is the closeout for our two multipurpose activity centers. George General Contractors has completed the closeout process for the construction package associated with the multipurpose activity centers. And so they've submitted a final change order, and this closes the construction contract for this construction package and releases back to the district $50,870.79. And so the recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the closeout change order number 09 for construction package that resulted in the multipurpose activity centers.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Mindy?
I may that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy. In a second. Becky, thank you, Becky. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys. Move on to item F, Approved Change Order Number 001, Closing Bid Package A, the renovations to Mustang Panther Stadium.
Yes, the the project to renovate Mustang Panther Stadium was issued in two different packages. Both the construction packages were funded by the Grapevine Mills Tip Zone. Lee Lewis Construction Company has completed the closeout process for the first package and is ready to close bid package A, submitted a final change order and releases $250,650.83 to the district. Represents unspent contingency funds in the construction contract for this package. So recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the Deductive Change Order Number 001 for Construction Bid Package A, renovations to Mustang Panther Stadium, which closes this package and releases $250,650.83 to the district.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion? Becky?
I may we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
And the second? Doug? Do I see Doug? Doug, thank you. Questions?
Lisa, I have a.
Yes, Becky?
It's not so much a question as a comment, but just thank you, Paula, for the work that you do on these. It's much, much better to come to the end of these projects and have money turned back to the district. And so if we can like keep this up, this would be awesome. Thank you.
That is so true. I would say I don't know what Paula's gonna do with all these closing, but later on, on the rest end of the agenda, we'll see what she's gonna start doing. At least she had a little bit of a breather. So any any other questions? So all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item G, Act on the Guaranteed Maximum Price from Lee Lewis Construction, Inc. For the renovations to Bear Creek Elementary School, Bransford Elementary School, Colleyville Elementary and Heritage Elementary School. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, so this is for the bid package to renovate these four schools, and I'll ask Paula to give a brief synopsis and a description, a general description of what's happening at these four schools.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. The kinds of things we can expect in the renovations are similar to what we've just accomplished at some of the 2019 campuses. We have four elementaries in this particular package, and then we have Colleyville Heritage in the next passive package. One of the things I want to point out is the subcontractor coverage that we did have when Lee Lewis put this out for bid, which was 95 subcontractors on 28 trade areas. Another important item is to note the date of substantial completion for these projects. That is for all of the scope to be completed on these four elementaries as of August 14. That date allows the district to begin its cleaning process on August 7 and to install furniture the week of August 10, which is the same week that teachers come back. This is very much like what we did in this past year, so we're dealing with some of the same lead times as we did in 2017, 18, and 2019. It does mean that Lee Lewis will have all of our areas in a usable condition, just not finished, and then we'll go through the completion process and go through all of the punch list items throughout that time. So the GMP for each individual campus was outlined in the summary that you received in the packet. Together, they total a little over 7.4 million. That includes one alternate that's been accepted or recommended, I should say, to replace the mini blinds in the Learning Commons at Colleyville Elementary with motorized shades. The GMP represents the maximum amount that Lee Lewis will receive for the work specified in the project manual and plans for each one of those campuses. And with that, Dr. Ryan, are we ready for the recommendation?
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the individual guaranteed maximum price for each campus as outlined in the summary and in the construction contract and the total guaranteed maximum price or GMP of $7,440,312 from Lee Lewis Construction Incorporated for renovations to Bear Creek Elementary School, Bransford Elementary School, Colleyville Elementary School, and Heritage Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second. Becky?
A second.
Thank you, Becky. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Now I don't have to worry about you, Paula. You do have something to do. Move on to item H, Act on the Guaranteed Maximum Price from Lee Lewis, Inc. For renovations to Colleyville Heritage High School.
Yes, so this is a separate package, similar situation, and so Paula, if you could take us through some renovations on tap for Colville Heritage.
It's a little bit of a project by the nature of the work to be done at Colleyville Heritage. Good coverage again with 101 subcontractors providing bids on 30 different trade areas in this project. What you see is more than one substantial completion date related to the scope of work. The majority of the work, the things that we are used to seeing in our previous projects is to be completed by September 23. Substantial completion for two other items have to do with the baseball fence replacement, which would follow along with what we did at Grapevine High School. We'd start that in November, have it completed by the end of December, which is kind of which is in line with what the athletic department and the coaches would prefer by way of a schedule. And the big item is replacement of the camp fire alarm system. You have to maintain an active and functioning fire alarm system, so the existing system will stay in place while the new one is being put in. And then when we conclude the school year next year, then in June, they would begin to take out the system, which is why the substantial completion date for the replacement of just the fire alarm system extends into August of 2021. And actually, to pull that out and and do that properly takes a bit of time and even a summer is is challenging in a in a school the size of Colleyville Heritage. Again, even with the later substantial completion date that we have for Colleyville Heritage, the campus would be ready for the district to begin its cleaning process as of August 7, moving in furniture into the Learning Commons again the week of August 10, ready for school begin, areas to be usable but not complete. Another big item that's taking place at this campus, which is the reason for the substantial completion date to be a little bit later, is the replacement of the cooler and freezer in the kitchen, and there is a long lead time for that item. The GMP, of course, is outlined in the summary. It's 5.7, almost 5.8 million in terms of total renovations to the campus. We did include or asked to recommend one alternate, again, having to do with motorized shades and a rather larger Learning Commons space at the high school. The total GMP is the maximum that Lee Lewis will receive for this particular project, given what's specified in the manual and on the plans. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, Paula. I appreciate the the summary there. And again, before I read the recommendation, I do want to thank our community. Five years ago when we started planning this, and of course, the 2016 bond was approved by voters in this in this community, and we're able to continue the work throughout the district, and these are really important upgrades to our school and replacements for the kinds of things that we can't take out of our maintenance and operation budget. It has to be done on the INS side, on the bond side. So again, thank you to the GCISD community for this work. And again, we're gonna see that over the four schools that were in the previous item and of course, Colville Heritage as well. The recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price or GMP of $5,784,303 from Lee Lewis Construction Incorporated for renovations to Colleyville Heritage High School.
Thank you, sir. Recommendation, do I have a motion? Mindy?
I may that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy. In a second.
Second.
Doug, thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item I, Act on Appropriation of Interest Earnings from the 2005 Bond for Phase II Investigation Study of the creek and drainage near Cross Timbers Middle School.
So most people remember about 10 months ago or so, it was Father's Day last summer where the creek, we just had four or five inches of rain in a very short amount of time, probably even more than that. And and it flooded flooded part of the school, the creek came out of its banks. And so since that, we've been continuing to study that to see if there are things that we can do to mitigate that, and this is another portion of that. Paula?
Yes, sir. The board will remember that in November, you approved a small appropriation to begin Phase I of the investigative study. That phase has been concluded. It reviewed FEMA studies of the creek to determine the flood plain and its extent, also looking at city drainage models, as well as a physical review of the creek. The primary purpose of Phase I, other than to look at the FEMA information, was also to determine the scale and magnitude of the investigation that would be needed in the second phase. And I mentioned then that we would have Phase II. So now we're coming forward with Phase II, which will assess the the creek areas that were not shown in the FEMA model for extent of depth and flow and to verify whether there might be a larger issue that exists specifically if that adjacent creek has sufficient capacity to handle the flow of water in a in a flood event. The good news to at least share at this point is preliminary information from the civil engineer would suggest that the creek does have adequate capacity, which would be which would be very good news if that's what we find at the end of this investigative study. The study would also review survey drainage around the building, the practice field to the north to develop a plan to mitigate water on the field and near the building. And then also a review of the geotechnical report, that is, the the taking of the bores to to look at the rock conditions on the site. As they look to identify and give a recommendation about any or or some replacement or rework of, say, the parking lot in and near the gymnasium area there at Cross Timbers. Along with the investigative study, would the civil engineer would put together an opinion and probable costs so that we would have an estimate of what it might cost in the future with their recommendation of what it would take to remedy the situation and prevent that gymnasium from being able to flood in the future. So those are the items that make up the lump sum appropriation request. So with that, Dr. Ryan, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the Board Trustees to approve the appropriation of $50,975 from interest on the 2005 bond funds to conduct Phase II of the creek and drainage investigative study for Cross Timbers Middle School.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Becky?
Yeah, I may if we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky. In a second.
I'll second.
Thanks. Thank you, Louie. Questions? Jesse?
Just a quick question. Paula, you might have mentioned this, but what kind of what timeline for them to conduct the study and then come back to us with recommendations?
I'll be honest, I do not have a timeline. We were hoping to meet when the pandemic came about. We had just had a meeting to kind of discuss what Phase II would be. So I hope to be able to provide some information about that. Quite honestly, we've been focused right now on preparing the projects that we've just recommended the GMPs for, having all of that ready. We've spent quite a considerable amount of time meeting and talking with Lee Lewis to make sure that those projects, as well as the swim center and the administration building that's already under renovation, were well in hand and moving forward, will now begin to focus our attention on 2021 to include this creek study here and another situation potentially at Bear Creek.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item J, Act on the Board Policy DEA Local and a New Resolution to Move on to item J, Act on the Board Policy DEA Local and a New Resolution to Compensate Employees of the District Due to the Extended COVID-19 Pandemic Closure. Dr. Ryan?
This, this item is an update of a resolution and policy for our folks that, for some, for some of our employees to be able to actually do some things differently. And so I'll, I, I do want to point out, the three people that are the contact folks, Gemma and Paula and Deanne, in addition to our, our legal folks, have done a great job of trying to update this resolution and policy change to be able to benefit the school district. So Paula, I'll ask you to take us briefly, briefly through this item, please.
Certainly, Dr. Ryan. Thank you. So as Dr. Ryan mentioned, the recommendation is to update board policy as well as approve a new resolution with regard to premium pay for non-exempt employees. So I'm going to begin with the policy first. So the origin of the language in our policy dealing with pay during a closure is based on historical events like inclement weather and utility disruption. Those events have not resulted in more than five days of closure and typically about two or three days. And most of those situations, bad weather days, that were included in our work calendars helped to make up the missed time, missed time in bad weather situations. The current situation obviously presents a whole different set of circumstances. So as a district now six, beginning its seventh week in this situation, we're looking at another phase of the pandemic and our need to maintain the operation of our schools and our departments. And that comes through engaging more of our support staff. We need them and our plan is to do this while also following all CDC guidelines, state and local rules, because it remains our priority to keep our staff and obviously our students safe. So tonight, we're recommending that the board update the policy dealing with premium pay. Some of our paraprofessionals that I just referenced and a few of our auxiliary staff are able to perform some or a large portion of their jobs remotely. This keeps them and others safe, but to engage them going forward in the current disaster and in any future extended disaster closure, not just this one, the recommendation is to amend the policy so that premium pay is only required when a non-exempt employee must perform work at a physical district worksite. This aligns with our practice to compensate non-exempt employees differently when the district is closed and they're asked or required to leave home to go to a district worksite to perform those duties. So these changes you can find, you can see in the copy of the policy at page 83 of your packet. Also, I want to point out when we're looking at this policy that FEMA rules for reimbursement require having a disaster, require having disaster pay language in the policy ahead of a disaster. And then that is followed by a resolution that details the specifics of that disaster. This is a reason for having this section in the board's policy. And let me point out that it is only required for an extended disaster situation requiring closure of the district. It's not necessary or required for brief events like snow and ice days that we've commonly had in the past. So additionally, we're recommending a news, a new resolution for the COVID-19 closure that aligns with the policy change that I just explained. It too changes when non-exempt employees are eligible for that premium pay. So the new resolution shortens the applicable period of the first resolution only in regard to premium pay. I make sure everybody understands, does not change, it continues to pay staff during the COVID-19 closure that the board approved in the month of March. Finally, our, our recommendation is that both the policy update and the new resolution are effective immediately following tonight's board meeting and your approval of these changes. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for board trustees to approve the proposed changes to board policy DEA Local and approve the new resolution for payment of compensation to non-exempt GCSD employees for the duration of the extended closure, which effectively ends the previous resolution approved on March 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second. Louis, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Louis. Any questions? Jesse?
So Paula, if I, I just want to make sure that I understand this. So the fact that we're changing policy and then the fact of us doing the resolution, then in the event that in the fall, say, heaven forbid, but we've got to close again for the second round or whatever, as you hear people talk, does that mean that we'll be covered?
I'm unmuted already. When you say covered, I want to make sure I understand this. Or I'll, I'll say this first, this policy change would be in effect for this or any other extended disaster closure. So that your language in the policy is always there. Again, what we're, the only thing we're changing is when employees are eligible for the premium pay. So if, for example, we had to have employees or more employees working remotely in the fall or three years from now or whenever, this, unless it's changed, would still be in place and it's just about the premium pay as well as the other parts of the policy that were already there. If you mean covered by COVID-19, I think that's still subject to a lot of, you know, review and discussion.
No, no, you, you've answered, you answered my question of the first part of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other questions? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Paula, for the explanation. Move on to item K. Act to Approve Resolution, Approving Examinations for Acceleration or to Earn Credit and the Resolution Approving the Named Provider's Audit Process Demonstrating That Examination Accurately and Appropriately Assesses a Student's Knowledge and Skills of the Teaks. I hope there's a better explanation than what the agenda item is.
Well, I can guarantee you that Mrs. Tovar will help us, help us get through that. So I'll, I'll ask Dr. Schnouts if there's anything else that you would like to add before Mrs. Tovar can talk to us about that.
Yeah, I just want to say we're really excited about looking into this new Avent initiative, if you will. You know, you see there in the, in the board agenda and the cover item that it addresses goals one and two of LEET 2.0. You know, right now, we are, we are blessed to have students and families here in GCSD that speak approximately 58 world languages. We welcome that diversity. We celebrate that diversity. But with that also comes a few challenges, as you can imagine. And so what this new Avent Assessment Initiative will allow is it will allow, it will cover more of those world languages right now through Texas Tech and UT. We only offer credit by exam for seven of those languages. This Avent Assessment Initiative will increase that to 23. And so it, it's, it's really exciting for our students. It not only allows for credit by exam, but we also allow for acceleration opportunities in the world languages. And so Shannon Tovar is here to go into more detail on that, but this is an exciting initiative for us. Shannon?
You're need to mute, unmute.
She's not showing to be muted, Kyle.
Yeah, it's not showing muted on our side. One second, Shannon, let me switch something over to you. Right now, Shannon? Looks like something on, on your side, on your machine possibly.
Shannon's headphone icon looks just a little bit different. I wonder if it's muted on the, on the, on the device.
Seems like it's got something on there. You're right, Doug.
If you want to probably try to jump out and jump back in maybe reconnect.
Yes, Jesse?
Would you consider moving on to the next item? I mean, the superintendent has not made his recommendation. Would you just want to move on and then give Shannon a chance to see if she can get on rather than us waiting around?
Sure, because the rest are information. This is our last action item. The rest are information only. And two, Kyle, I know on mine, it was because my, I was, my whole computer was muted. Maybe it's her actual computer.
Yeah, I sent her a text that, that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. It's a good idea. We can move on, Dr. Ryan, if that's good with you.
Okay.
Move on to item L, 2019, 2020 Budget, Budget Update.
Yes, and so I know the board heard information in the budget workshop about next year's budget. This is, of course, an update about this year's budget. And so I'll ask Deanne to take us through a recap of where we are in this year's budget.
Okay. So this is our monthly update on where we are. And of course, I presented these projections during the budget workshop, but I'll just go through a little bit more detail. These do contain actuals through March. So if you look on page 94 of the agenda packet, we'll just go ahead and talk about what the projections are versus the current budget. So on the revenue side, we're projecting 137.8 million in overall revenues. That's net recapture. When compared to the budget of 134.3, that is a favorable variance of about 3.6 million. And down below, looking at the expenditures, we're projecting 139.9 million of expenditures versus a budget of 140.9. So that leaves us a favorable variance of 1 million on the expenditure side. So those combined give us a use of fund balance of 2.1 million. Of course, the, our current budget is a 6.6 million use of fund balance. So it's about 4.5 million less than what we thought it was going to be at the beginning or when we adopted the budget. I'll say that. There, this is not much change from what I presented last month. It's about 500,000 better. And so with that use of fund balance, we're looking at an estimated ending fund balance of 54.9 million.
Thank you, Deanne.
Thank you, Deanne. Do I have any, does anyone have any questions for Deanne? Nope, seeing none. We don't see. Thank you, ma'am. Do we have Shannon yet?
Thank you. Now?
Oh, yeah.
Hey.
There we go. So we will move, thank, I'm glad you figured that out. We will move back up to item K.
Grand entrance. But as Dr. Schnouts was so correct in pointing out, we do have a variety of home languages. We want to be able to honor the learning that students may have already come to us having from their previous experiences, but not necessarily formal instruction. So in our current system, we have seven foreign languages that we can use through UT. The challenge there, for some of our kids though, is that you would come, let's say if you wanted to take French, you would sign up, you would take the French one fall semester test, you would take the French one spring semester test, and then we would kind of go from there and we just have French one and two. The difference is with the Avent, we're going to be able to have the student in one sitting take a test. It is going to be computer adaptive. So what it does is it moves the questions around in terms of difficulty and what the student should know in relation to TEAKs, and then give us a, a result of where we'll be able to not just give the student either for the course, for the one course from one test, but for all the years prior. So for example, let's say a student came in and they spoke German already, but they hadn't had formal instruction here at school. And so then they took the German one fall semester test and they took the German two spring, German one spring semester test, whereas here, the student could just take the one test in the one sitting and possibly earn German one, two, three, and four. And so this particular product, the Avent itself, we could use it like Dr. Schnouts said, for placement. So maybe a student could go into Spanish three after joining our schools, let's say, as a freshman. But then we could also go ahead and award credit based on those results for Spanish one all year and Spanish two all year. And what that does is it opens up space in their schedules so that if they need other things to help them get caught up just due to coming into our new system here, or if they need those credits for some other activities that they might be involved in. So that's a huge win for the students as well as honoring what they already, knowledge they already possess or knowledge they have sought out on their own independently without us. And then that way, we're able to award that credit. So all in all, I think you're going to see, one, it really eliminates barriers for students in terms of goal one, because now they're not having to come up for multiple test settings and then also frees up time in their schedules towards graduation in terms of credit, but then also two, in terms of social and emotional, showing that you do value and have the opportunity to express and celebrate knowledge that the students might have saw that on or come to us already possessing. And so what we have is the resolution asking you to add Avent as an option for us to be able to give it to the students as well as acknowledging that it does meet the verification requirements, which are essentially that all the TEAKs are assessed, that the test isn't widely available, so a person can go find it on the internet, they have intellectual property, so people can't go find that test out there in the world that were, that it's going to possess some level of integrity, reliability. So they do have different raters score the tests and so forth, about 20% of them to kind of get a sense of, is it measuring what it's expected to measure? And so that is what we brought here for you. And just let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate the explanation. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the resolution approving the examinations for acceleration or to earn credit and the resolution approving the named providers audit process as demonstrating their examination accurately and appropriately assess a student's knowledge and skills of the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills for relevant grade level.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky. In a second.
Second.
Doug, thank you. Any questions?
I've got one. If I can go.
Yeah, Doug.
You said like these languages are, they meet the TEAKs requirements. Is the TEAKs general enough where it doesn't specify a language or is there a TEAKs for Armenian and Tamil and Somali and all these other languages that Avant has?
That I don't know for sure, but I can find out for you. But in terms of languages themselves, there would be common TEAKs throughout. I can tell you that Plano and Frisco have been using this successfully for several years, and so we feel fairly confident to be able to be a positive thing for the kids.
Well, it seems like, it seems great. And the, I do have a couple more other questions too. So it would be, they are credited by, by Texas Education Agency. And would this, would these students be able to place out of their two years of language requirements that the, the high schools and the TA and colleges require using this?
Yes. So for example, if a student were needing more space in their schedule for something that they were doing outside of additional electives, they could use this process to then get the multiple years' worth of credit by exam credit instead of taking the course here at the, at the high school in the brick and mortar setting. The other option too is, is that a student might demonstrate proficiency for level one and two and be able to start at level three in, at the high school, let's say, and then be able to make it to four and five, let's say, for. let's say for Latin or Spanish or those kinds of languages, or AP.
Okay. And do you know how colleges treat this, the, this accredited, this, these credits versus ones you actually do in school?
So these are going to go in pass, pass fail, because credit by exam doesn't impact their GPA. And so really, the advantage for a student maybe who is concerned about that, of course, visit with their university of interest. But as well, too, realize that for those kiddos, probably they're hoping to get into a higher level of the language sooner so they can continue on into those, like, let's say, Spanish three, four, or five, and then along those lines here at the school, and be able to get into AP sooner would be one option for them.
All right, thank you.
Jesse.
Shannon, are there any costs associated with the expansion of these credit by exams?
So it is, we do have, our district absorbs the cost for all those. We're required to offer credit by exam. What does this, what we, we did our budget this spring. We looked at what this would cost and how many tests it would be versus what we have right now. And we were not, we didn't need to grow our budget at all to do this, because what's going to happen here is theoretically, a student, instead of taking two tests to get one years of credit, could take one test and get one, two, three, or four years of credit. So I think in the long run, it could be a potential neutral or maybe even better situation for, for us as well.
Okay, I understand that, but then is there a dollar value, though? I, I mean, I gathered, I saw from your example in terms of how you see that as a wash, maybe possibly, and even a savings. But I was just interested in if there was a dollar amount that we were looking at as far as when you expand that.
No, I didn't, I didn't do that for you, but I can, if you'd like, we have it aboard up to, for you for Friday. So you can see what the difference is between, let's say, CBE that costs us $40 each versus the Avent, which is $70 each. But again, a student who's taking the $40 version is having to take multiple, multiple attempts quickly to get to the same level of credit.
I'm not sure if my fellow trustees would want that information. I, I think it would be useful. So I just, I'd like to see that. But again, I, I give that up to the rest of my trustees as well.
Does anyone?
Definitely not.
I was, anyone, I can see him shaking their head.
I do think that we can, one of the things we do, we should, need to start, I think, doing would be good is for you to be able to see what all is spent on credit by exam and be able to show how successful the students are or are not. So we can get a sense of that, so that you can have more of an annual updating on it. And this spring and summer, as you know, with many people having to be flexible, is going to look a little bit different as we go through the spring and summer. So this may not be the ideal time to try to organize those data, but maybe later, let's say, August, after we get through this first batch, I'm having to be a little more innovative in terms of how we're delivering credit by exam to then be able to show it to you in August, because we won't have any star data. So that might be a good time to think about doing it possibly. And along with that, too, we'll be looking at how well this worked in terms of having students take it online for the first time, because we're also going to be working with UT as, to do a lot of our math telescoping, credit by exam information online for the first time this year as well. So there might be a lot of exciting innovations to come from our current situation.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. I like that.
Have any other questions?
Yeah, so Shannon, so can you give some additional examples of what the languages are going to have opportunities here? So for example, would Hindu be an option? What, what kind of expansion are we looking at here?
Sure. So for right now, UT, we have French, German, Japanese, Korean, Chinese, Spanish, and Vietnamese. But when we add in, and we should, Avent as an option, then we would have Arabic, English, French, German, Hebrew, Hindi, Italian, Japanese, Korean, Mandarin, both simplified and traditional, Polish, Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, Swahili is coming soon, Yoruba coming soon, American, Armenian, Chin, Czech, and then Filipino or Tagalog.
So that's a really impressive list. Thank you. And I noticed in the resolution that we're passing here that it says that there's options for elementary and high school credit. I know we've got eighth graders, of course, that are currently taking, you know, the Spanish AP test. Do we have a rough idea of what age group we are kind of thinking will participate in this? Because I'm assuming there's probably at some point, they're too young to really take language CDE.
So right now, we've been looking mostly at our students who would be rising into high school. And that's where we typically get the high school credit requests for credit by exam. We don't usually see them in the younger students yet in terms of their language acquisition. Maybe they're not quite there yet, or they're not thinking about high school credit necessarily in those younger groups. So I think if we give it a, you know, give us an opportunity really to gather and to try it and see how it's going to be delivered, as well as right now being delivered possibly a little bit differently than in the past with having to look at some online type of options in terms of being able to monitor them through WebEx or something like this. It'll be a little bit of a learning experience at first, but then we can explore those possibilities as well.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Becky. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. We move on to. Move on to item M, update on the 2016 bond program.
Yes, this is, I'm hoping that Gary's on. Yes, there he is.
I will, Kyle is turning over presenter to me, so if you'll give me just a moment, I'm going to bring up the PowerPoint. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right. Big enough?
Yes.
Very good. All right, Gary, welcome to our meeting. Gary Ratamaker, are you there?
Birthday boy.
See him connected. Gary, can you hear us?
Is he connected with us?
I see his screen.
He's in the, in the list and unmuted on our side.
You might have to do the same thing, unmute.
Maybe he might need to jump out and back in as well.
Another suggestion, Madam President, can we move on to the next item?
Yeah, we're down to just, there he comes. Well. That just Paula taken that off.
It's just me, and if I need to, I can give my best Gary Ratamaker impression.
Looks like he's, he's trying to rejoin.
Okay.
All right. Welcome, Board of Trustees and Dr. Ryan. It's so good to be back with you this evening.
Voice needs to be a little deeper.
Sorry.
Hey, we like you, we like you better already.
Here we go. Jesse, I'm going to let him try one more time and.
I'm here.
Oh, there, all right. Okay. We just can't see you.
That's probably good for you guys. But I did dress up for tonight, so it's like, you gotta be able to see me. Kind of. Kyle, we good?
Yeah, I hear you're good.
Okay. All right, I got the screen up, Paula, so thanks for your help with this. Good evening, trustees. Dr. Ryan's good to be with you. I really miss you guys. It's not the same just seeing you on the screen. So I'd like to do this next month in person, hopefully. So we're going to start with the 2019 renovations, just going to give you an update, an overview, kind of a recap on the 2019 renovations, just a few things, excuse me, left to be done. At Grapevine High School, the gym flooring material has arrived and needs a couple of weeks to acclimate. It, it's probably into that two-week period, but it just needs to acclimate to the conditions before they start installing. The stage floor installation is going to begin May 4th, so that's around the corner. Grapevine High School, still the existing administration area will be complete in the next couple of weeks. I've got some pictures of that. At Grapevine Elementary School, the, there's some paint touch-ups still to be done, and some of the technology work in terms of installation of the rack and termination of that, of those components is, is being completed now. So also at Grapevine Elementary, the, there's several retaining walls, you know, that slopes off pretty, pretty good there in the front. And so the last of the retaining walls is going to be built this week. And final grading around that retaining wall area has started. Sidewalks are going to be completed and poured in the next couple of weeks. So, so that's just sort of a recap of that. A couple of shots here on the left, you can see the, the control vestibule that was finished a few weeks ago or maybe even a month ago. And then the pictures on the right show some of that demolition of the flooring and the rest of the administration area, which will get new flooring, new materials, some casework, et cetera. So lots going on there. And so next slide, Paula. Again, at Grapevine High School, the, it's really probably one of the first time or only time you get to see the top of the smoke vents. These are above the stage area, and it was kind of found that those were not operational. And they do, they, they are part of the life safety, part of the stage in terms of, you know, if there's ever a fire or smoke, that, that they automatically pop up and allow the smoke to exit. And it's part of the life safety component of that building. So those have been installed, fully operational and ready to go.
Gary, excuse me, weren't these, weren't those the, the, didn't we have like a storm in it? And they were faulty of some sort and leaked at, at that point? Isn't that right?
I think they were, they were, there was some leaking going on in them. And then they were, once Lee Lewis kind of got up there and started investigating, they were found, a lot of them were just shut. I mean, they, they were just sealed tight. They, I guess the good news is there's never been a fire. The bad news is they were kind of sealed shut. So we had to, you know, they're just old, old components, and it was time for, time for new ones.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Again, at Grapevine High School, existing gym floor removal, a fairly tedious process. And if you're lucky enough to walk through there, they would have handed you as many of those old wood slats as you wanted, because literally they throw those away. Just the floor of this age and the way that it's installed just can't be installed or reinstalled anywhere else. And so that's, that is no more, and they're getting ready for, for the new flooring after a good, long period. You can see on the left, the new flooring, as it comes in in pallets and it sits and it acclimates to the conditioned space. On the right are just the rolls of the vapor barrier that's going to go down right on top of that slab. So everything will go right on top of that. Moving over to Grapevine Elementary School, in the new classroom wings, you'll see here the cabinetry being finished, flooring's in, all the interior finishes and the restrooms. And then another shot of the classrooms with marker boards and, and technology components as well. So moving, moving forward pretty quickly, you see again in that classroom addition, the corridors with the tile, painting, windows, lights, everything and flooring, buttoning up with the rubber backs on the floors, and then just some minor touch-ups on door frames. And again, on the exterior, at Grapevine Elementary School, you can see the new classroom wing, the brickwork is done, final. There you can see, and then beyond, most of those structures is where the retaining walls are, are happening. So just really cleaning up around the exterior of the site and should be ready to go real soon. Glenn Hope, if you recall, the, the issue with the exterior wall there is now being remedied. The installation of the, the white slats, there is the insulation that goes in, into the wall cavity. And then the green, the green component is the exterior jip sheathing, and that'll, that goes in the cavity of the wall. The brick will go on right after that. So that's moving along really nice. The summer 2020 renovation work, start off, see. We're going to kind of walk you through a couple of these. You don't recall if you've seen the detail, but the, I'll just kind of go quickly over the scope of work, learning commons, as, as we've done in previous packages. Classroom intruder hardware, security kiosks, student used, student restrooms. There'll be some drainage work at the playfields, some HVAC upgrades, and then upgrading the intercom system with the replacement of the head-end equipment and exterior speakers, and then a new dishwasher in the kitchen. So you can see the before picture, and then we've put together a couple of renderings for the learning commons.
Gary, if I could.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify so that nobody is confused by the controlled vestibules. A campus like Bear Creek already has one, but we are augmenting some items in these spaces to kind of fall in line with what we've done at the newer controlled vestibules. Of the packages that we approved or that you approved tonight, only Colleyville Heritage was the last building to actually need a controlled vestibule to be added, and that is a part of that package. So when you see references here to Bear Creek, Bransford, Colleyville Elementary and Heritage, they already have a controlled vestibule, but we will be adding some things there, including those kiosks that you've seen in some of the 2019 packages.
Right.
A lot of these upgrades are similar for these campuses here. So as Gary said, you're, this is the existing learning commons on the screen right now. And for every one of these that we show you, we're going to show you a rendering, two renderings of what the future looks like for the learning commons. So take a good look at Bear Creek, and then I'll switch over.
So one of the shots here is at the learning, learning commons. Beyond, you can see the tech hub and, and some of the reading nooks there. So you'll see the, the new fresh look at Bear Creek with new flooring, painting, et cetera, ceilings. Here's another shot at the learning commons, looking back the other way with the seating area. And so you can see just the, the fresh look with furnishings and new paint, new ceilings, new linear lighting. And that'll be pretty common throughout each of these learning common areas as well. And so at Bransford, again, as, as Paula mentioned, there's the scope here with the learning commons, the intruder hardware, the kiosks, the new serving line and dishwasher in the kitchen, HVAC upgrades, and again, replacing the intercom system. So that's the old library area. And here's our proposed look at the new learning commons, bright colors, bright lighting, LED lighting, again, linear fixtures, new carpet, palette, new paint scheme. And so just really some bright, fresh touches to that with new furniture, new, new bookshelves, a lot of mobile, mobile furnishings there. At Colleyville Elementary School, I was, I was trying to think this beyond our, beyond Canon, it's the newest elementary school, but it's over, it's over 10 years old. And so you wouldn't think of Colleyville Elementary School being, being over 10 years old. So it's time for a little refresh, again, with the learning commons, very, very similar scope here in what it looks like currently. So Paula, in the next couple, you'll see really some, some bright new colors, some new lighting again, new carpet. Again, just a new paint scheme, really fresh furnishings, et cetera, so.
And again, in each of these learning commons, we're creating those collaboration spaces within the existing space. A little bit harder to see in some of these renderings, but you can see one in the back of this image right here, for example, which would be different than what you have at Colleyville Elementary right now. I think in a couple of these campuses besides a collaboration room, they've actually carved out a space for a maker space, and they're busy trying to equip those. Sorry, Gary, next one?
That's a couple, yeah, that's, and it's really the. That's a couple, yeah, that's, and it's really the, I guess it's the progress of, of where we are with collab spaces and, and, and kind of going away from computer labs and that. So we're able to use some of those spaces either for both or maker spaces, et cetera. So at Heritage Elementary, similar scope, you can see the, the shot there of the existing library. As we move forward, you can see another view there. As, as Paula mentioned, the learning commons, lots of open seating, the tech hub beyond, and adjacent to that entry, doing some pretty nice lattice work there on the ceilings, hanging some cylinder lights, again, all LED lights, and then a new fresh paint scheme there. At Colleyville Heritage High School, Dr. Brople will be sad to see this go, but we've got a similar, similar scope. We're going to add, again, in addition to what's pretty much the same at others, you'll, you'll notice here the auditorium sound and lighting updates. We're going to replace three chillers, some HVAC upgrades, and water heater replacements. So it's time in that cycle for those upgrades or replacements, intercom systems, and then some work in the, in the kitchen. I was remiss in bringing forward that GMP and mentioning the replacement of three chillers at this campus, which is a pretty good scope of work for sure, so. Yeah, that's a, that's a big deal. Current in our beige, and I'm not sure what you call it there. Do this. Almost yellow, I guess. And so this first shot here of the learning commons entry, and you can see the tech hub beyond, a couple little collab spaces way back there in the back. So really an open, you know, fresh look. Again, paints are fresh and did some brand-new lighting and flooring and wall materials as well. And so another view of the learning commons and the open seating area. So I think that's a pretty significant change, I would say. And at the Swim Center, next, just a couple of shots here of some exterior utility work. There's going to be quite a bit of paving that, that had been noted in some previous reports as either damaged or it just, it was time to replace some of the areas of paving, so we're doing that, a little bit of utility work underneath, but that's happening as we speak. On the inside, just some of the prep work that they are doing. It's just on the left, really just courting off the pool area, and then it's really just mobilization and getting ready to do a lot of the work. On the right, it's a weight room, just some areas that they chose to, to store things and, and prepare, like for locker rooms and storage area items. Some more interior work. There's going to be quite a bit of plumbing, some drain work, some interior HVAC work in, in the pool equipment room, and so that's a lot of what you see going on there. Some more interior flooring and wall demolition. So there's quite a bit in the locker rooms. You can see a lot of the prep work also, covering up things that aren't moving or aren't getting replaced. And then a lot of demo of the floor and wall, shower fixtures, and some toilet fixtures, but that's going to get those, some of those locker rooms are going to get a pretty nice upgrade, so. And then I think there's one, one other project to touch on. Thought it was the I thought it was the administration building, but I don't know what's happened to those slides. It might be down below that Creek Study slide, maybe? No? No, sir. We might have used an older one. I apologize. But the administration building, if you've driven by there, you can see it's, it's fenced off really nice. Sawyers has done a lot of their prep work, a lot of mobilization, fencing to secure the area, and you'll see some trenches around where they've started to dig out for a lot of that remedial work and waterproofing of gray beams and different things, drainage, getting ready for some drainage improvements and upgrades there, too. So they're moving, moving ahead pretty quickly there. So hopefully I, I covered everything, Paula, and I'm happy to answer any questions. That's good.
Thank you, Gary. Does anyone have any questions for Gary? We wish we could see you.
No. I know, I missed.
How old are you, Gary?
Well, I, I touched the wall at 55, so I'm 54 now. Going backwards.
Happy birthday.
I'm hoping to make it to my teens. Thank you very much, Jesse. I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Gary. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item N. Review owner contingency expenditures. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, so the board's been presented the, a few owner contingency expenditures since the last time the board has met. We'll be subject to your questions.
And do we have any questions? None. We'll move on to item O. Review the 2019-2020 Board Planning Calendar.
Yes, there are several adjustments to the Board Planning Calendar, and you can see those on page 104 and 105 of the packet. Many of these are reports, and, and some of these are just things that have happened that we need to move because of the shutdown. And so we'll be subject to your questions about the changes in the Board Planning Calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do we have any questions? None. Move on to item P. Request for Reports to the Board. Do we have any? Move on to Consent Agenda for Approval. Do we have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I moved that we stepped items A through O on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jesse. Do we have a second? Jorge, thank you, Jorge. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. There's, thank you. Moves around on me. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements? Becky?
Yeah, I just know we have in our audience tonight visitors from Leadership Colleyville, and including the Chamber CEO now, Chelsea Rose, and Carolyn Sims has been with us too. And so we're just happy to see Leadership Colleyville here with us tonight, hanging in here for our virtual meeting.
I'm glad they were joined, they joined us. Any other announcements?
Jesse, if you, you want to go first, Jesse, or do you want to go?
No, you go ahead, sir.
So in the last couple of weeks, we've had three of our middle schools receive some pretty significant awards. Heritage Middle School was named an avid demonstration school, which is such a big deal for their school. They worked so hard to be able to get that. Colleyville Middle School has been named a school to watch in association with TASSP and the National Organization. And then just this past week, Grapevine Middle School was named a schools transforming learning school from Into Learning, which is an organization that we support through the Principals Institute. And so those three middle schools are really doing some good work, and we appreciate the hard work of, of not only the principals, but certainly the teaching staff. And speaking of the teaching staff, I think, I think we certainly need to mark the fact that over the last month, and really over the last six weeks, our teaching staff has just done a remarkable job of taking our learning from brick-and-mortar schools and taking that home and making it virtual. And not only have our teachers really learned a lot and grown a lot in the, in the times, types of instruction they're providing, but the entire team, you know, so much has happened even in technology. We've, we've gone from a brick-and-mortar school to, to really a virtual school with the same number of people in technology as we've had before. And so Kyle and his team have just done a tremendous job, in addition to our teachers and our administrators. They're really working hard for our community, working hard for our students, and they're just doing some heroic things. And I just want to say hats off to our teaching staff and to our principals who are leading such amazing work. And then, of course, I, I couldn't, I couldn't leave out our nutrition services folks who are just working like crazy, and our, our technology folks who have a, have a, a line two days a week for people dropping by their broken machines to be able to fix. I mean, just everybody's just done tremendous job of pulling together and, and working. It's been very difficult. We're a people organization, and the isolation has been difficult, the not being able to see each other in person and, and talk to our colleagues down the hall, whether we're in a school or in the administration building. That's been very difficult, but our folks are fighting through it, and I'm just so proud of the work of the people in GCISD of how they're, how they're stepping up. And, and one other example is something called Parent University. And it's from our curriculum instruction team who's organizing that. Dr. Newell and her team are, are pulling together this parent university. Some of the items that we've been working on are technical support or tech support, certainly routines at home for parents, and then different resources for parents and students. And so on our website, you can, you can find the next parent university. It's just a little 30-minute class usually, but, but they're doing great work trying to reach out to parents and families to try to provide them some professional development, because this is really hard, this, this work that we're doing with our learning at home. So that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Jesse?
Yeah, let me, first of all, say, Dr. Ryan, that thanks to you and your leadership team for your leadership through all of this. And yes, while we acknowledge and congratulate all those groups that you mentioned, a lot of kudos go to you and your staff as well for leading us through this. So thank you for that. Lisa, I'd like to just talk a little about NTASB, if it's okay? Okay. As, as you all know, we canceled the April meeting because of the COVID pandemic, but just wanted to make you all aware of a couple of things. First of all, I did send out to all of the school districts that represent regions 10 and 11, the new slate of officers for the next two years with, with NTASB, as well as a copy of the bylaws. And we're asking every school district to just let us know, if you get a chance to look at the bylaws that we revised here this spring, as well as a slate of officers for you to just give us a thumbs up. And we're just providing that opportunity for school districts to do so. The new board officers will be for the organization, Lynn Sperr from McKinney will be president, Vice President French, she's from, is it Valley View? And then Secretary is Ruthie Keys from Keller, and then the Treasurer is Robert Selders Jr. from Garland. So those will be the officers for the organization, and, you know, they will be the officers for the next two years. And then the last thing that I just wanted to let you know is that every year we award the school district with the most attendance to our NTASB meetings, and we have two winners. First place was Denton ISD, and then second place was Carrollton Farmers Branch. So we want to congratulate those school districts, and we look forward to having four of these meetings next year. Whether they're in person or virtual, we'll have to see. So anyway, those are the announcements that I just wanted to share with my fellow trustees.
Thank you, Jesse, and thank you for the slate of officers letting us know. And you know, there's not anything we all vote on, but if any, but I will send out the okay to response to the email that I received. If anyone has any questions or comments, if I, I just ask that you give me a holler tomorrow. Not anything for us to discuss here, but thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. I believe teacher appreciation is next week. Am I correct on that? So just some really neat things that are happening within our community that I think they're really thinking outside the box. And y'all, and I know Mindy helped me on this if I get the information incorrect, but there is actually a site you can go and adopt a teacher. And just what a great idea to, to send the love and, and thoughts to the teachers out there, since they're not in there, they're not getting the, the hugs and all from their, from their students. But there is a link, is it on Facebook, Mindy?
Yes.
That you can go and adopt a teacher throughout the district. So just, just amazing, again, amazing community. And we, there's also a link that you can go and adopt a senior, and I believe this is for both high schools.
All the high schools.
All, all of our seniors. So again, you can go online and you can adopt a senior, and again, share our thoughts and, and prayers and love onto, onto them also. So just some really, again, what a great community we all live. Anything else we can do since we can't be together? So I appreciate the, the community doing that. Jesse? Yes, sir?
Yes, I, I'd like to remind my fellow trustees that I am a former teacher and I am a senior, so. Just in case. In case you're wondering.
Thank you.
And I'm up for adoption.
Wrong senior, wrong senior, Jesse.
Sorry.
Adopted, Jesse.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? The none. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Jesse?
So moved.
And a second. Becky, thank you, Becky. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Meeting adjourned, 8:54. Thank you, guys, for joining us, and we will see you next time. Y'all be safe.